Okay, all special members of your House of Commons, the Capitol, and the President. Whatever your work is at the Capitol. Do you have any questions?
I have the need to United States for Intuitive Republic of Voices and Rights, a nation under Indivisible, liberity, and justice.
If the towers would please come forward and start.
Very good, very good, please. So you guys have a great state with two songs where Longyear As Tally, 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 Blockly, and in harmony to the best of your abilities, so help God.
Where would that be?
Slidestest, to the possible of the town of Whitten. Greetings. In the name of the commonwealth of Massachusetts, to a yet by director to notify Karen Moore in the absence of the town of Whitten, following the Republican elections in town affairs, to the town hall, instead of Whitten on Monday, the fourteenth day of November, twenty twenty-two, seven thirty p.m., then a day of the Gattara Ball of the Night, Articles one, thirteen. And to a yet by director to serve this morning by posting up contested copies there in not less than eight places, public places in the town, fourteen days before the day of the ceremony. Here, if you don't mind, may we do your turn to the warrant for the year of the week's air arms of the town at the time and place of holding it. Given that this began its very first day of October twenty twenty-two, signed by Rianfinkie Martina, Chairman, Justice Arden, Justice Quarter, Dr. Carl, the law speaking member, Warren West Nation. I hereby certify that I urge the living warrant of posted eight copies of said warrant in various sections of the town, with two copies to be issued in the day of ten thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, contested by Hospital Joe Almane.
Thank you. Just a reminder, all my lawyers, you can see my permission here as designated area. All amendments submitted tonight must be in writing and signed. Massachusetts General Act, Article one, two, three, the Town Law, the Department of Commerce, the Department of Labor, the Department of Commerce, the Department of Attorney. For speaking or speakers, please raise your hand, raise your hands high, it will be obvious. And would you recognize, and what does that recognize you? Please go to the nearest microphone. You have one here at the center. You have the balcony, you have one here. And say your name and your address. Please provide your comments to the article of our special floor. And you have to be very excited to have our further question for the first time, as it comes up. I would also like to welcome the right back server for finance committee. This is my honor, my dear. These volunteers stood in the town in a very valid service. So please go ahead and thank you for your service. All right, the thorough procedure. We have a witness tonight. A warrant, thirteen articles, we have requested Article twelve, or Article twelve, which is the hearing of the board of the board's side, related to increases in salary expense to certain positions that were yet funded in the end of the town week. And it's a can, and companies that are up here at the table. If there is no objection, we'd like to take Article twelve for our substance of about back to the division. The draw to any of our articles will be taken. All right, well, hearing every objection, proceed by your consent. Just a question.
Good evening. Good evening. I was placed at the back table in the area of the floor, we're teaching because I think it's important to understand what we're doing tonight, what we're doing. And I'm stopped by saying that I would like to bring out an requirement, a request, that here in the nation, Article Article one, represent the question should be important, although it's a doubt. As you know, the position treasurer collector is in the right position. As a right position, the sole requirement qualified peronals to receive one more than fifty votes, fifty percent of them. The reason of requirement is that they have any experience or expertise in managing and handling cash or collecting municipal bills. When the town was formed in eighteen seventy-five, our taxes was like treasure, a record of seventeen thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. The budget, by the way, was twenty-one thousand one ninety-one, we actually borrowed money that year. In twenty twenty-two, our record was forty-five million six hundred and ninety-four thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. The financial market today is far more sophisticated than what most of the past. And the financial security of the town is a great part of it. One of our positions is treasurer collector. We have been fortunate to have had services Meredith Carter, this town calendar since our appointment of the vote selection in October of two thousand and five, following turmoil of the investigation into the collector's office. This Carter was first appointed as town treasurer on December second, two thousand and eight, following retirement of treasurer of the town. On those occasions, the vote select was able to evaluate this Carter's qualifications. And the town was fortunate to see this Carter seek a mention to those positions, which was subsequently combined. It is very much in the town's interest that early street markets be qualified to conceal someone who has access to an authority to invest at various times up to forty-five million dollars in taxpayer rate pay money on behalf of the town. And I request you move forward with your vote to change the position of town treasurer collector from elected to appointed. Should you vote to do so, this question will again be addressed on May twentieth, twenty twenty-three, at the annual town election, where this question will be placed on the ballot. It's a two-step approval process. Articles two through five, can best be described as housekeeping managed in the May second, two thousand and twenty-two annual town meeting, funds for certain expenditure, monstrosity, preventing the town from adding those costs to the tax levy. Because the information necessary for such a tax trick is incomplete at the deadline for posting this warrant, it was necessary to choose the town's stabilization account, current balance two million, seventy-three, seventy-fourty-three, as a funding source, with the understanding that the three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty dollars on cents requesting these articles in Article eight, nine, one thirteen, will be returned to stabilization from certified free cash, which is presently one million nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars at the next town meeting. With respect to Article thirteen, I am sure as requested as a market conditions, the town administrator or town manager has become extremely low as reflected on the backside of the document. Saving the town administrator, Article forty-three, one fifteen, produces limited results and the market conditions require greater compensation and will be analyzed. Extended range to one hundred and sixty thousand. As we noted, that responses, but it must be a willing while competitive compensation, the ability to recruit string of money. That must be a word addresses thousands of people, not allowed to lay their step in the race. Article six, seven, and ten, I simply can't speak without the town. And just one further by the way that Bobby Quaid said in the when I'm a former town administrator, I served as town administrator for nineteen years. I retired at twenty. I was asked for that to kind of hold things together while we recruit someone to take that responsibility. Just a brief time since my retirement, the average salary of this position is well over twenty-five. And the problem we have today is they're competing for positions for the continually shrinking core of qualified candidates. We don't think this request likely. When I once voted select in the last conference, said, would you please allow me to increase the range of subject to accrual in town meeting? They authorized. I then raised the level that we were offering as a range. In the hopes that we get your approval to do that. That actually resulted in more qualified candidates. And I encourage you to make the impression of how important this role is. Town administrator is an individual that conducts this activity. We all work together, helps people work together with the resource that those need. And basically, it takes a few years to learn. So with that, I submit the asking of all the parts and the recommendations that's why I'm here today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Will you have any votes for Article one?
Sir?
Second. Article four.
Article five. I just see the town shall have elected treasurer collector, you have appointed treasurer collector of the town, subject to acceptance by voters of the town in the standing of town election, or take any direction other than there to. Your motion, sir, to get a second, respect. Ms. Conlon.
Yes, very conscious of my right. It's safe, you know, they need for a position. But you have a job to check before the section is going to be because other than that, you wouldn't have to certification of Massachusetts Culinary Association. So you know, it isn't just anybody.
I can respond to that.
Ms. White?
We have.
Remember that these qualification requirements now apply to election. They are subsequently available. You can be elected, you can have a period of time. And then there's one of the others. Qualified for that particular position before you actually have to present those credentials. And we would have thought to validate my position, treasurer.
Very good, thank you. The town session. Chapter forty-one, section ten, eight, eight, and ten, eight, eight, eight. And then please put forward the attorney. I'll attach to you a lot.
Ms. Carter? Do you want to do this?
Thank you. I'm hoping that also accessories to follow her similar situation. Yeah, I just remind to question what sort of protections would be good for the ladies in the in the masses? That protect have deal of level of protection. And when we have this particular position, it puts us to a place where we try deciding our money. And then somebody controls their money. On that, what sort of protection do we have? Which one is the pressure that?
Ms. Carter?
Meredith Carter, eight, nine, six, one, three. This article is so important, I imagine, relatively and a huge success of Whitten. I truly hope you're you vote tonight in a vision of changing the current treasurer collector position from elected to appointed. Having started the town of Whitten as the town collector, a town treasurer, and subsequently as the treasurer collector, the two positions were combined. I have a total of eighteen years with the town. I have experienced firsthand the extensive duty to responsibilities of this position and been full of this position place as part of the town's findings, too. I'm certified as a list of treasurer and a certified application collector. I completed three years of force track certification, three years of collector, and three years before as a treasurer. In addition to your qualifications, there are other criteria which a person needs to be, whether you're able to test certification. So if you have a non-certified person, you're allowed to do a position as treasurer collector, possibly move one, three-year term, or even two points, for not being managed by the town. I don't run for you with the all the due responsibilities of treasurer collector, although I do have a few complete responsibilities for you. As trainer, I maintain the custody of all municipal plans and assess responsibility for deposit, investment, and dispersal and monthly fund. I administer the town resources to ensure the availability of active, active, and other assets to pay obligations and expenses. I maintain a cash flow containing a great amount of all receipts, dispersments, and cash balances, and plenty of able-to-reach issuance and payment in all town debt. I'm responsible for receiving and accounting for all dispersal, all payable, personal, personnel, production notes, taxes, and insurance, etc. The treasurer's office currently invests all benefits to employees and employees. I maintain the stability of stabilization funds, the trust funds, the enterprise funds, investments, and all accounts of the town, not specifically allocated to other agencies by federal law, except that. Only the treasurer's office may pay out, pay all the funds that's with the treasurer. On the collector's side, the office possesses a report to collect all money on a counter account, a duty list account. Responsible for posting all payments, paying his three months, we check all bills, bill over to the total completeness and accuracy of information. We establish procedures for the day of the election, posting it positive money elected. Maintain a manual of automatic task management list showing the status of past pay or house. We compare a journal of data, the home is received, a model of detailed report of all charges and needs collected. Maintain the receivable control or cash folder for outstanding cash due at the start of the month. Make it sizable for the day of the birth. Be responsible for the process of the turnovers. We initiate the tax statements, announce for outstanding, unsecured, and unsecured town, and of course, we prefer free care, missing certificates requested by attorneys for sales and refinances and property. If the position is not changed to appointed position, the town runs the risk of possibly having a person who is unqualified and or inexperienced as treasurer collector. This position is too important to the town's financial security possibly having a person with a name, contract, or a non-qualified in his job. Voting this change from elected to appointed will allow the town to hire the best candidate of this position. A person that has financial experience, great work ethic, someone who's had an elevated and learned to govern education, from certified national title treasurer collector. If the candidate chosen is not already certified. Basically, the treasurer collector can handle every single thing that goes into the town and loses that. So it's very difficult and typically never should be changed to appointed. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for Article one? Yes.
Do you have any other questions? I have a question, so we have eight. The appointed coroner candidate, who's going to make sure they achieve chapter forty-one, and who's responsible in paying their education to do so?
Ms. White?
The town has a history of supporting education month employees. However, the responsibility of our the requirements that are best solely with the individual. An elected officer cannot be directed or mandated by anyone other than a town election. If you have an elected individual that is not performing, the town has very good options to address it. There is no recall process. There is a security process that standards could be hacked for pretty big part. If a treasurer collector is appointed and the process is done publicly, as you will see in the next several weeks, the vote of select will be seen to appoint the town administrator. The candidate will be pre-betted by a search committee and will then be presented to the board of selectmen for public interview and analysis. One says, the board will let it public. I define a candidate that they feel has meets meeting qualifications and then most. I don't think you give a whole problem for you than that. If you think you've got a gap, the information you need on M.A. is so good. I doubt it. And we've had a light individual that put a long vote, but we were not able to do anything about it.
Any other questions? Sir?
Eric, this is Bill Fox. I'm fifty-fifty on this right now. It's something similar to having someone who's qualified and then hearing that from my wife. Joe, hopefully you have this in this, I was like, blah, blah, blah. Here you go. But I have two questions. One would be, to help decide, are there other towns in the surrounding area that takes more approach to the treasurer collector? And the second question would be, might this position offer?
Ms. White?
I did a common study several years ago. I can study right now that the majority of towns surrounding us are unqualified. The majority of towns in this state are unqualified.
Any other questions? Ms. Carter?
Hi, John Carroll, I'm ready to hire officials. I do want to say that I did accept that forty-one, only in two thousand, in Seattle, except. But I'm also a local official. So I got to be outside of the local officials. And you know, I would say fifty-fifty, I'm also very good. But I look at it this way, that the town votes are here tonight, town votes come to the ballot box, and they vote, and I haven't gotten along in the last hundred, so yes. You know, those same folks that are running for treasurer collector also left the board selecting. So they are against, I'm not against treasurer collector, but they also against those people who vote for that position. I think the town's going to smile, you know, who's who again, who just voted for the government, who voted all patients that they have. You know, there's a reason why I'm going to have to go across. And I just, I took my day, and as a local official, I've got experience between people here tonight. What I'm doing right and what I'm doing wrong. Then I would draft five people who would have. I hardly tell you every now and then, I'm just five people who are not hired. And I think one of the twenty-seven is, I actually will see your sort of new town hall. I do a driver job, and you got this.
For the discussion, of course.
But I can hear it, it was in Washington. They are receiving, reflecting the horrors of this town. You couldn't change this, why do you do so many appointed, sorry, appointed positions? From this position to a location, there are certainly trusts within this party. And they raise their statistics. So I'm looking for someone to manage my finances and confidentiality, and I ask them, I'm looking for somebody who can only invest in your town. I want somebody who's managed to be with an understanding of financial acumen. This is one of those positions. When I'm looking for somebody able to count finances and investing in your town, I look for someone in that position who has, that has an understanding of financial acumen. And that's why we're having a discussion on this topic. We're looking for somebody who has, somebody who has an understanding of those understanding of financial habits. Which is why we're having a discussion on this, and why this people. So you know, that's my approach to decisions.
Ms. White?
Right, small, decent, thoughtful. One other thing, if the vote of select are voting this out and you're interviewing candidates, you're not limited to the fourteen thousand somewhat people in Whitten. They're actively moving this on the town and getting the best available person here. And I'm investing in four, five, six.
Sir?
Thank you, very, 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 what's that? It's town district, I haven't been on speaking, but I want to make one point. I don't see any possible sign of a less democratically appointed town official. This was presented as a very long lengthy list of fancy qualifications. Well, people with a long list of fancy qualifications are just as capable of doing harm. And if the people vote, I just don't think it's a point of view of this aspect. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Justin Gass, and I'm here in Long Street. What can I say on this? I was here on finance director, treasurer collector of the town of Brooklyn. I can speak with some local experience around this position. Rather than the commonwealth, we have a lack of useful finance officials. This is a very extreme top position to build. Treasurer collector, as our treasurer collector, gave me a small whistle, meaning to associate with this position. He had positions of three times, where he was two times actually, a non-registered position in Brooklyn for treasurer collector. You need a qualified person to do this position. There was a meeting that had an inexperienced official at college where the treasurer collector ran this position. There are some tax implications as a financial combination for the town. I am very strong in supporting, which is a point position. I can say that at the time of the year, that's all. So of all the articles, always more of these, most of them, they should be.
I have a question, because I don't have a, you know, a point to that everybody then, you know, issue. That issue would be having too much individuals in one area. I don't think that I don't think the person who falls in first place, who's all hired down, can have their wages held by someone of their own. I think there needs to be some other powerful man to protect, that's all. Whether it be, whether it be someone in the finance committee, or some other way that they're that's all. I don't think this is providing protection. That's all.
Sure, yeah. All right, making over comments. Would you want to call the favor of Article one, say yes?
Yes.
Close enough.
No.
Article one's about. Article two, see if the town of Brooklyn will amend this source of funding appropriation previously, or five, the May second, twenty twenty-two. previously adopted in Article five, May second, twenty twenty-two, in town meeting, not any classes. So as a change in source of funding available classes, transfer from town stabilization account. The exact order of amendment, article, be as follows. Transfer two hundred sixteen thousand fifty-nine dollars from town stabilization account. Transfers to one of the municipal school district, a cost of class in town, one of the municipal school district soon, within less than one twenty-five hours from school day ten, or take any direction over there to a big motion.
Motion.
Motion second, special, Article two. Okay, there are eight nine. Move to one or two, this study required two persons to draw a very fast. So all in favor of Article two, say yes.
Yes.
Close enough. Article three adopted in unanimous. Article three, see the town votes will amend source of funding appropriation previously adopted in Article three-four, in May second, twenty twenty-two, in town meeting, fire for the board, to as a change in source of funding available classes, transfer from town stabilization account. The exact order of amendment, be as follows. Improve the life department in town, with one seven six nine national association, fire rise, A L C I O. The period commencing July one, eight, eight, two, June, three, twenty twenty-five, across sides, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, funded in part, the money appropriated in part of fiscal year twenty twenty-three, operated by Article two, and transfer six thousand dollars from town stabilization account, paid remaining costs, and as a taking any direction over there to. Any motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion second, special, Article three. All right, saying none, but Article three of the vote, all favor of Article three, say yes.
Yes.
Close enough. Article three adopted in unanimous. See if the town votes, Article four, to see if the town votes will amend source of funding appropriation previously adopted in Article three, said in May second, twenty twenty-two, in town meeting, the board, the board, the board, so as a change in source of funding available classes, transfer from town stabilization account. The exact order of amendment, be as follows. Improve the life department in town, in the urban federation, state county, and police and L C I O. State council, ninety-three, twelve, seven, hundred, period commencing July one, twenty twenty-two, June, three, twenty twenty-five, across sides, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, funded in part, the money appropriated in part of fiscal year twenty twenty-three, operated by Article two, and transfer seventy-five thousand one hundred and sixty dollars from town stabilization account, paid remaining costs, and as a taking any direction over there to. Special, Article four.
Move, sign.
All right, we go forward with the vote, all favor of Article four, say yes.
Yes.
Close enough. Article four is adopted in unanimous. Article five, see the town votes will amend source of funding appropriation previously adopted in Article thirty-eight, May second, twenty twenty-two, in town meeting, town board, the board, the board, the board, so as a change in source of funding available classes, transfer from town stabilization account. The exact order of amendment, be as follows. Improve the life department in town, in the office, the office, the professional employees nationally, in the local sex day, L C I O. The period commencing July one, twenty twenty-two, June, three, twenty twenty-five, across sides, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, funded in part, the money appropriated in part of fiscal year eight, twenty-three. Operating by Article two, and transfer seven hundred and fifty dollars to town stabilization account, paid remaining costs, and as a taking any direction over there to.
Motion. Second.
Motion second, special, Article five. All in favor of Article five, yes.
Yes.
Close enough. Article five is adopted in unanimous. Article six, see the town votes appropriate, one thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars on one store container, for payment of the following fire, street, bills, and a little bit of two hundred dollars, professional engineering services, five hundred eighty-five dollars, laser light, five hundred and six dollars, or take any direction over there to.
Motion. Second.
Motion second, page, special, Article six. Yes, thank you.
Please, I have a question. It's always playing professional engineering service.
Article.
I just spent two fifty cents speaking from also the virus, so presented. We have a contract with the environment office and the providing professional services for us, and so the end was this, but it's, I'll have to make a call back soon.
Did you still, in January, you kind of refused to do it, but I don't know.
Please, that's very.
I'm not sure I understand what you said.
Was there also a pay, professional engineering services, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents, and voted it to January, special, down?
Yes.
Yes. Are we allowed to do the service?
No.
On.
This is right.
Public works, we spend four million dollars a year on services that are delivered to the town, those include professional services and labor. The request here is to pay a bill that felt attractive, did gain every time, were not making people rich, were paying not being billed, and if you analyze the way you want this to be billed, members of the town may be voted.
Any further special, Article six. Article six, this require, I guess, a little bit, so all in favor of Article six, say yes.
Yes.
Close enough. All right, all of you standing down. All in favor of Article six to stand and then talk with the panel. All right, and then you have seen them all close, Article six, say yes. I have a question, please, you agree, yes?
Forty-four, one. Forty-four, four, one, yes?
In case you find, Article six is adopted. Article seven, see the town votes appropriate, eight thousand dollars on one store container, demanded the cost of care, and the building service intersection sports, which generally will top, which is then by failure, for it to be watergate, and the watergate fully contain any direction over there to.
Motion.
Any motion, second, special, Article seven. All right, there are three nine, all in favor of Article seven, say yes.
Yes.
Close enough. Article seven is adopted in unanimous. Article eight, see the town votes appropriate, transfer six thousand dollars from town stabilization account, partly in May second, twenty twenty-two, in town meeting, the paper, associated with the request of the board, with this issue, taking any direction over there to.
Motion. Second.
Any motion, second?
Yes. Just remember. Mr. Moderator, you referred page six at the handout. There was a motion to amend this, screw it up here. On page six, the law, the motion to amend this article to remove the word raised appropriate in order to blow the transfer of seven dollars from the town stabilization account as noted in the term.
So we have a motion to amend Article eight, or?
Yes.
And special, amended. All in favor of amendment, Article eight, so the reason, Article eight, I have, say yes.
Yes.
Close enough. Article eight is amended, special, amended, Article. All in favor of Article eight as amended, say yes.
Yes.
Close enough. Article eight is adopted in unanimous. It's amended. Article nine, see the town votes approve the life department, the town votes apply the R C I U, level D, eight, eight, the period commencing July one, twenty twenty-two, June, three, twenty twenty-five, across sides, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, funded in part, the money, used to be appropriated, is part of fiscal year twenty twenty-three, operated by Article two, and transfer one thousand five hundred and ten dollars and three cents from town stabilization account, under the eight, across sides, taking any direction over there to.
Motion.
Motion second, special, Article nine. All in favor of Article nine, say yes.
Yes.
Close enough. Article nine is adopted in unanimous. Article ten, see the town votes appropriate, one hundred and forty-six thousand seven hundred eight dollars and forty-seven cents from reserve appropriation, K access account, defined E P G access services in accordance, messages in general, one hundred and forty-four, section fifty, three, half, three quarters, or take any direction over there to.
Motion.
Motion second, special, Article ten. This side.
Some explaining of E P G and also really with this preparation, have K access funds?
We have a contract with our table, my, to provide public, educational, and governmental access to this describers. The contract provides that they will collect and distribute to the town fees that are assessed for that purpose, and those funds are then used to fund the K access corporation that is operated jointly by the enhancement to provide public, educational, and governmental program.
And then there is special, Article eleven.
So is this split class against the paying, taking, or not?
Well, the town has seen the answer, the negotiated contract, and the payment each town base is based on the number of describers, so we each pay our proportion and share.
This time, did you vote, yes?
The law listed here is, that's number forty-four, section fifty-three, three quarters, it's an energy revolving loan, by the nearest way, that relates to this.
Good evening, this is Charlotte Allen from Murray, Murray, and I'm not sure if you all, Pastor Lawrence Chavler, forty-four, section fifty-three, at the three quarters, establishes a revolving pouch for funds, it's known as the E P G access and cable-related funds, including the larger funds received in connection with a franchise agreement. Between a cable operator and this power, money and funds are only appropriated for cable-related purposes consistent with franchise agreement. So basically, what this article is saying is that we're appropriated, come to a favor to be appropriated, some of these ground reserve for operation, K access, that's the funds that's created, which is fifty-three, at the quarters, for services that are permissible to be paid for by that law, that's all I have to say. You're very welcome.
Discussion, Article ten. All in favor of Article ten, say yes.
Yes.
Close enough. Article ten is adopted in unanimous. Article eleven, see the town votes transfer, fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty dollars and fifty-one cents from town stabilization account, the town votes will share with total cost, ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars, twenty-nine cents to pay the cost, to replace the electronic card access system, all of its components that is no longer functioning due to catastrophic failure, systematic use, and it's useful life, or take any direction over there to.
Motion. Second.
Any motion, second, so I?
This particular article is very unique in the sense that we have a process that all the partners have to go through in order to spend money on capital expenditures, the department needs to submit a request, the capital, the capital, sorry, the finance committee, the board of selectmen. In this particular instance, that process was bypassed due urgency in this entity, and the reason for that is for various reasons, there was a failure in your control system for the schools, the failure was system wide. Well, I'm not real happy about the fact that the, the capital, our chairman, chairman, capital valuation process was bypassed, and a lot more worried about the fact that these laws may be secured for updates, and where this town is what we are.
Discussion, Article eleven. All in favor of Article eleven, say yes.
Yes.
Close enough. Article eleven is adopted in unanimous. Article fifteen, see the town votes transfer, twenty-one thousand sixty-five dollars from town stabilization account, the end, the common operating, but the town, Article two, in May second, twenty twenty-two, in town meeting, funded, as described by this, taking any direction over there to. Prefer to select the town district, ten thousand dollars. Prefer nine, town quarter, two thousand dollars overtime, and if more, two thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Prefer sixteen, fire department, two hundred and forty dollars. Prefer seventeen, building, two thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. Prefer twenty-two, T P W highway, part, two thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. Prefer twenty-three, Super Garden, part, two thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Prefer twenty-four, part, one thousand dollars, seven dollars. Prefer twenty-five, National Meeting, seven dollars, library, twenty-six, library, four hundred and sixty-five dollars, or take any direction over there to.
Mr. Moderator, motion to amend.
All right, any motion to amend, Article twenty?
Once again, you refer to page six, I am amending type of record letter. When the article was prepared, there was one line, and they added, who is not included in the totals, so I'm seeking to amend the article solely to read, see if the town, forty-three thousand sixty-five dollars from the stabilization account, and now it's exactly as you meant.
All right, any motion, second, to amend, Article thirteen, session, only for first amendment, this is the article.
John Carroll, forty-one, I speak. In the past, when amendments were made to articles who are easy among of the article, we were told by our council that beyond scope, that you weren't allowed to add money to an article, and I'm curious why this article, it's not allowed, that, you know, a lot of people.
Is it all in favor?
Thank you. So this is the typographical letter. It's not increasing beyond the article because the items and the reference comes from the capital and all that. And I believe all of these numbers were in the original, um, posted article. They add 2365, not 2165. So the whole point why you can amend an article is that it has to give notice to the voters as to what they would be asked to vote on. So voters who received the original article before the amendment would have seen all these specific, starting in 10,000, 25, 7, 14, 9, 6, 5, 37, 7, 12, 7, 9, 11, 14, 15. So they will give notice about what they were going to be asked to vote on. So that typographical letter, the letter, it was in this whole article.
I understand that the proposal there is our capability.
So is 10,000 of the town administration's requirements are currently bringing out the law sixty?
Article 16, do you hold on to amend it first for discussion or we got?
Well, we are discussing the amendment. Well, it went around as amended, but we are itself as well.
I didn't hear the question.
All right. Uh, favor of discussion, Article 17. They proposed it, Article 18. All right, they're all in favor of amending Article 13. As opposed, say yes.
Yes.
Close it up. All right, the Article 13 is amended. A discussion, the amendment. Ms. White.
So is the 10,000 of the town administration, the local agency, town administration staff and all sixty?
Two, one, six, zero.
Further discussion, Article 18. All right, all in favor of Article 13 is amended. Yes.
Yes.
Close it up. Article 13 is adopted in the United States. Yes, amended. Do we have a motion to move to her?
Motion to move to her.
All in favor of her?
None.
Thank you.